Good evening. Today is Tuesday, September 22. This is the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. Can I have approval, a motion to approve the minutes of the September 8, 2020 regular meeting?
Second.
Any changes or corrections? Okay, all those in favor? That motion passes. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 14, 2020 special meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Oh, should I abstain? I should abstain.
Okay, one abstention. I'm sorry, I can't see you over there.
I wasn't there.
One abstention? Okay, and next, report of the superintendent on the district reopening and update.
So I'm going to, I, I'm going to use the screen because I want to start to present things with the, with the screen so that when future audiences come, they can see it. So I, we're gonna do that. So you should find a socially distant seat and I'll do this as quickly as, efficiently as possible. And we'll assess if we like this.
I don't know if the volume is being turned all right if I speak. So the presentation that I'm presenting specifically on practices and approaches around public safety, I'm going to try to briefly. Primarily about our resource allocation, all of the work to get the schools of, all the statistics, but I wanted you to see them, of materials that have to be prepared. So this is our initial procedure to get us started. All of the other states like the cafeteria. All of the other big areas we've distributed in the box. And we know that we can fill. Very clear protocols for when the mask. Students know that the mask. First, teachers who requested additional. Start with this because this is our most important element in our safety plan is our consistent. So on our tour, all of the offices where we have multiple people approach the repossessed uh. Those are portable barriers that can be moved and transported. Primary to talk about sanitation stations located where we have entrances. So we're. Volume that we have that in the office. In this building, in the North School High School, this is something we've always done. Those are sanitizing wipes. These are primarily for furniture and other of our services. Health office alone, we have a requirement. So health office has been expanded. There has to be. Health unit here is known as an excellent model. Exercise sized tents as well as. Health units are a really important part of our. Someone can just rush into the building and do all of it there because if there is anyone who is. Start doing a verbal act. Bigger than at this camp. Testing the value of each component. Marking, marking, marks, assignment. You can do some work. All three buildings we have marking on the floor. Tell you, okay, really, that you hear really. Have a lot of ethical dilemmas. If you're standing in the hallway talking to someone, they're on the line, they'll just stop and uh. Like they just crack up. So then a really good. All that, they know the importance of it. So there's no guessing, like isn't this a secret? Everyone can have ownership over their own safety. Another part of our plan is we want students to feel that they have some control and they can look at the ground and say, I need. Some is the help of the company, but also maybe. All of which is consistent throughout the district. So we would. All of that has been consistently gone. President students in the secondary school are. So direct contact, we're going to do this. Additional layer. Doesn't need its single use, but it. It's almost like double because if we do it with. A lot of this on pre-COVID, there's a lot of my. Practices here in pre-COVID. So we're continuing with all of those. I was hoping to have a big audience. Trying to make a clean effort this is that this is done at home. So on a daily basis, we do expect. Part assessment about symptoms and any potential travel or if you have been near someone. I think this is a very important first because we could receive a. Been about a third in this campus day for example. All students were still in the school by three minutes before a long line of waiting to be screened. Everyone to take ownership over this service that we're providing like. So at the arrival, we have assigned entrances, recent history, a lot of expectations that we've. Oh, hanging out, you actually did a deep creep. Rivals is very soon. I'll talk a little bit about dismissal later because that's not. Oh, I mentioned we could have a lot of our daily COVID reporting dashboard. Really, the county would let us know if there are any positive pieces. Or is it an additional ride to. Very clear protocols for anyone who may be listening to. The new kind of news, this program. And involved talking. Have a preferred relationship with a. Doesn't need speech, we are standard for. Obviously, a same-day appointment for. Operator, any efforts at the county or state level. So are we, do we debrief this? All of reflective mindset and all aspects, all aspects of our work. So if I have more students coming in. While we travel, as we add students to this building. Sorry, your challenges with the hybrid model? We are supporting students in both. That has challenges that aren't. But for us to do this in a way that is. Hybrid models are challenging by design. Let's make sure we're designing a critical of the. They're learning how that works. This is an enormous. People are watching us and want to see how it's all going and today. They came for a visit today. All over the state, all over the other states.
All right, I have a couple of questions. So can you talk more? So the tents, so assuming the weather, you know, does what weather does and it doesn't, it doesn't stay, what is the plan when we, if we can't use the tents or if we get to November and we still need them, but we can't use them if snow or?
You know, we are looking at the use of the tents now and we are, because many teachers are relying on technology, we're focusing on learning how to use the technology. So there's a lot of screen sharing of showing like what my canvas page looks like. There's not been a very, I would say, an abundant use of them. So I think because we do have very safe classroom arrangements right now, I think we will be okay. I think the tents are, were an important part of all of this, of making sure that people knew that they had that flexibility. I think there are some challenges with teaching outdoors that I know that many people are starting to report on as they do that, both with, with noise, with wind, with other, you know, the lack of the technology. But we're going to continue to analyze like the need for them and we still have our larger spaces. So both of the, you know, all of the gym areas, the cafeteria area. So we will kind of be creative as those needs arise.
And can you talk a little bit more about like when talking about safety when we have, you know, kids' tents or that we're using multiple entrances? Obviously, we have to make changes to adjust for, for COVID, but just want to make sure that we're still maintaining safety and if we've done anything to kind of balance.
The only thing I would say that I know that, well, first of all, we, we're all, kids are, students are constantly supervised. So that's an important part of this is this is not a situation where they're like hanging out. It's all even like a mask break. Everything is under the supervision of, of an adult. The one thing that I think we could maybe look at is, I know we purchased additional radios for our staff to use in the morning to communicate about the arrival procedures. We may want to look at a culture of using radios to effectively communicate should there be a need to do that. That is something that I know we've discussed greatly because the, the regulations about a safe school reopening have kind of gone in, in, they've contradicted a lot of the other guidance that we were operating on even just one year ago in terms of, of where and how we, you know, handle all of those elements. We are still required and we will be doing all of our required safety drills. So we're going to learn then. I will say that anytime there's a lockdown, even if it's a lockdown drill, that will, that does supersede all of the precautions about distance. And so teachers will be still making sure that they have the ability to, even if their door is propped open because at arrival to classrooms, we don't want a lot of touching of a handle, that door should still be locked open so that just removing the chuck will keep the door locked. So some of those safety procedures will still be in place as well. But it is a new normal. Every single thing that we've done has to get looked at with a new lens of, of the additional health precautions as well as the safety.
Okay, so then I have, anybody else? Thank you so much.
Just, I think that your presentation was amazing. I, I think it really shows how much work and effort has gone into, to this reopening plan. I just wondered if we could put this up on the web so our community that wasn't here tonight can, can see it and maybe with a bit of overview and, you know, just a little bit of background.
Well, it's part of the recording, right? So they'll be able to, if they watch.
I think in addition to that, what I could do is I will print this as a doc, a file that we can have posted as, I think for all future presentations, we should just upload the, the whole slide deck that is used as part of the meeting documents so that I, I think that would be very good. Even if, we can also post it even as like a news story and then let people know this was presented at the board meeting, come out the next one so you can see a presentation. Like I said, this is, you know, the first time, I think, creating a culture where you come to the meeting so that you can learn about what's happening. So I think posting it up on the website would be a good way to, to kind of create that. So we can, we can do that in both places. I think maybe making it as a news story and then also including it in the official documents of the meeting.
Okay, we have an opportunity for public comment, but seeing none, we're going to move on to reports and discussion. First one is the board committee report for board operations.
So we met last week for our first meeting. We talked about the duties and responsibilities of the committee. We discussed the committee structure, reporting, meetings, rescheduling guidelines. We also talked about reports and presentations that the board of education would like to receive during the school year. So some of the decisions that we came up with would involve how, you know, how the board is functioning overall would be one of the tasks that this committee would look at. We look at the vision and mission should be incorporated at the board, priorities, strategic planning, performance monitoring, external and stakeholder relations, and the comprehensive district education plan. So some of the kind of things that we talked about, how committees should kind of look and feel the same. So we talked about not having a chairperson for the committee since they're such small groups. We talked about not rescheduling like we've done in the past unless there's two members of the board that can't attend. So those meetings should happen as they're scheduled. We talked about having two sessions and their minutes to report. One session would be a, a discussion session of what was discussed and then a, a decision session of what was decided upon, just to make it clear and easy for everybody to see. We talked about minutes should be reviewed by the committee and then sent out to a full board in, in the packets. Some of the presentations that we thought would be interesting would be agreed by the full board. Topics for presentation, but we thought, thought we'd talk about October's report as Albert mentioned on the reopening and how that's going and feedback gathered from faculty, parents and students through surveys. The next one in November, we talked about how the one-to-one device might be a good topic for us to get caught up on how that's going. And then we talked about maybe looking at, at students seeking and requiring more rigorous instruction, what we're doing for them. And then these, you know, during the year, I think our summer workshop would have a lot of this ironed out. So this year, we're kind of doing this a little bit backwards, but in the summer workshop, we would probably come up with ideas and topics for presentations for the year to give the administrative staff enough time to do them.
Okay, move on to the report about strategic planning.
So that's me. And I just want to say first, thank you for the presentation. It was really impressive and, and I think excellent to be transparent, transparent about it. So thank you. These are the shortest minutes I've ever written. I'm a little uncomfortable. So the strategic planning committee discussed, we, we tried to focus on what our goals, oh my gosh, I can't see, what our goals should be regarding visioning and planning for the district. First, the committee believes in the value of the. First, the committee believes in the value of the comprehensive district education plan, the CDEP, and aims to reinvigorate that work as a motivator to align our vision with planning and budgeting processes. The CDEP as an evolving document should be our roadmap. Empowering teachers and working with committee members and building leaders will be part of that goal. The second goal focuses on the fact that we are anticipating state aid cuts for this fiscal year, possibly 20% or more, and so we need to look at what impact that will have for us. The third goal has to do with how we'll transition out of this unusual year and what we can learn from it in order to innovate moving forward. And then lastly, we'll want to analyze demographic shifts in the district. So, again, these are goals just for the committee. Yeah.
Move on to the report for performance management.
This was our first meeting. The fact that this committee will... Asked how the old policy committee functions. And then we discussed our new policy, which is COVID workplace and environment accommodations. This was reviewed by us. We made some suggestions. It was... Then we talked about the COVID-19... All the things that were in the school. Sheldon shared information regarding the Capitol project over at Chancellor. The front doors will still be replaced. Window shades have arrived and they will be installed. Highlights are in. The sewer pipes have been repaired. The roof ladders, in some places, still... And the ceilings, hallways, and stair... And RHS and BMS. Both of the kitchens continue to require some work. The stoves need to be retrofitted. The roof shingles have been completed. Selling of plantar installed in the... The lockers have been installed. The guidance office is renovated and there's no... Operating in the middle school. Very well. The track is opened again. The automatic irrigation system...
Questions? For the facilities project, it seems like we're getting just to the end, like the punch list type things. Are we going to financially know if we have money left? Are we getting to that point where if there's some left?
Yeah, we'll be putting that all together to see what's left. There is not much money left, I can tell you that now. So, but we'll get a bottom line figure to see. I know there were some adjustments here at the end for some allowances that were used by some of the vendors to finish off some projects. So, I have to get that all into the calculations, but there's not a lot left over. Not like with the last big project where we had a lot left over at the end, which we used to reduce the bond as we, or pay off the bond, but I don't think we'll be that lucky this year. And the other thing too is because of interest rates, it's not like we really earned any interest over the past couple of years either. Like we did in the first project, we had over a million dollars of interest that was earned over the year. I don't even think we got $20,000 over the three years of financing. When you're only getting 10 basis points, you're not getting much.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Any other questions?
I just, I just want to say thank you to Sheldon for the tour beforehand. It was great, very exciting seeing all the changes and improvements.
Can I make a comment or remind a lot? I also want to let, one thing that came out of board operations is, and it was an example of this committee, that any, any board member can kind of propose an idea or a vision for the type of presentation. So, tonight's presentation really came out of a committee discussion about how it might be beneficial, and that also goes to the external stakeholder relations, just in terms of communication. So, I think that that is not something that is a product of any one committee, it's that the board in general would collaborate on determining what presentations would be of most interest and value to the board and to the community. I just wanted to make that extra clear.
We also talked about like something could also come up in the year that, you know, kind of demands a report of some type, so. So, we're going to move on to board priorities for 2021. They're not in the packet, you got those in email. Did anybody have anything they want to? No changes came. Is everybody happy with the way they are currently or anybody looking to make changes or need more time to discuss them? We have to formally adopt them, which we usually do, we could do it at the next meeting.
Yeah, it's on, there's no motion.
Right, we could do it at the next meeting, but...
I submitted a couple tweaks, did that not come through?
I didn't, I didn't see it.
No, you probably did on the Google Doc.
Oh, they might on there.
I'll verify that. I'll send out another, I'll make sure of that and then I'll resend it back out.
If there's anything, it looks like maybe it's just minor if anything, right? They're small, so everybody's happy with the way they are?
I had to leave that meeting a bit early and I just was impressed with how well-rounded the priorities are. I think it's a really nice cohesive list of things for us to work towards for the next year. So, I was happy with it.
Thank you, Albert, for doing the wordsmithing on... So, we'll, so make sure that you're happy, we don't want any other changes, then we'll have them on the next agenda to formally adopt them after we...
I'll include them in the packet, obviously, as well, so.
All right, so we'll move on to the New York State School Board Association proposed resolutions.
All right, so I'm hoping most people had a chance to look through these. I just mentioned that, you know, most of them are pretty straightforward items that are... Most of the time, they make, they're kind of common sense things that, you know, should be priorities for NISBA to, to kind of lobby on our behalf, priorities for school districts to lobby with, or, you know, to advocate for with governmental groups. I will point out that there are a couple of resolutions that are from local area school districts. Number 14 is from the Beacon City School Board, which involves declaration of alternate election arrangements in cases where a disaster substantially interrupts scheduled school board budget votes. There is also number 19 is from Weebituck. And I'm not sure on that one because it seems to indicate that sort of an unfunded mandate situation where they're proposing that there be a mandated training for, for board members regarding a policy related to child abuse. Not that that's necessarily a bad thing, but making it a mandatory issue would then cause us to possibly incur expense. So, that's something that I would suspect that in the business meeting, there'd be quite a bit of debate about that. And it may not get approved, but something that you should at least take a look at. And...
Mark, on 14, on the one from Beacon, I mean, wasn't there a push to not have elections in schools anyway because it really goes against safety standards? So, it seems like, wasn't there already, I feel like there was, it wasn't a resolution last year, but well, maybe it was a resolution last year. There was already a push like to not have elections be held in schools.
Well, this one is actually, involves a school district vote where there was a bad storm during, on Election Day. And some of their roads were blocked and they still had to move forward with the election because of state law that says the election has to take place on whatever the day of the...
So, they couldn't just move somewhere else to make it?
They couldn't postpone the election or whatever because of the storm, so they're advocating for that. I'm sure there may be some debate on that as well, but I mean, it seems to make sense. But, I mean, there's a reason that this, the date is mandated by the state, so.
But there was another situation locally a few years ago for a Capitol project vote that happened in the winter. I can't remember if it was Hyde Park or Spackenkill, but it was a day in which the schools got closed and there was a huge storm, but that vote went on, but...
And, you know, in a situation like that, there's a lot of backlash from the community because the election went on and maybe not as many voters would have turned out as may have turned out on a normal, good weather day. And so, the school, Beacon is looking for a way to postpone the election in a situation like that so that they can reschedule.
Yeah, that makes sense. And the one from Weebituck, I, I feel like this is kind of like the one they did last year, they just...
Yes.
Seems like they have a need in their district for, I mean, I'm obviously not against this. The only thing, the way that it's worded, those that are mandated and those that are not, I mean, who, isn't everyone in the school mandated? Aren't we, just like we are when we go through our sexual harassment, I mean, aren't we still mandated to report if we're...
They're mandated reporters, but we're not mandated to take any training as far as I'm aware.
You take one course and...
Right, but their wording says those who are mandated reporting, those who are not. I mean, who would that be besides the public?
I mean, they're mandating, they're recommending that we have to have a retraining every period of time, so. Not sure how people feel about that, but...
Yeah, I'm not against the idea that, but I don't, you know, I don't, I don't, just like, just like last year, it'll be the only one that I would be concerned about.
There's a couple proposals from Aniora. I'm not really sure if I would, if it'd be in our best judgment to agree to those, but something we may want to take a look at. There's actually several of them.
Mark, is there any distinction between the proposals that the resolutions committee is recommending and not recommending? Are they just including them all and then, because I see they're differentiated?
Yeah, so there's some at the, toward the end that are not recommended and, you know, they have a, NISBA has a resolutions committee that, there's a representative from each, each area. So, there's, I think, is it 11 or 13 areas in the state? And each area has a representative on the resolutions committee. And they actually discussed all these resolutions at a meeting. I'm guessing the meeting was virtual this year. And some, after debate, you know, debate amongst the resolution committee, they decide that it's really not something that NISBA thinks we should support. But nevertheless, as part of the business meeting, since someone made a resolution, they'll put forth the resolution and there's different voting rules for those resolutions. There's more, more of the districts have to vote in favor of it rather, as opposed to the other ones that have been recommended.
Don't they usually put those at the end and they rarely get to them? Is that also kind of what happens with them?
Yeah, so, you know, the rules for the meeting state that there has to be a quorum for the entire meeting. And if, if there is no more, longer a quorum, then the meeting ends. So, a lot of times, especially if the meeting is, just for example, if the convention is being held in Buffalo, there's a lot of people that'll want to leave. And occasionally there'll be, they'll lose the quorum after, you know, a couple of hours of, of meeting time. So, that's why those are put toward the end. And, you know, normally, I would say if the resolutions committee didn't support them, there's good reason for that and unless it's something that people really feel strongly about and want to stay and, and debate, a lot of times they don't get through them all. But the last few years, the meeting has actually run very efficiently, so they have gotten through the entire agenda. So, depends on, you know, how it goes.
Virtual, it's hard to say people have to travel.
Right, and they've changed the rules this year for, for the alternate delegate, you know, for an in-person meeting, you have an alternate delegate so that if the regular delegate has to leave the room, the alternate delegate can take their place on the, on the floor. For the convention this year, the, the business meeting, whoever the person is has to stay for the entire meeting. So, for example, you know, you, if it's a virtual meeting, you can't leave the meeting.
The alternate stays too, or just the, just you stay?
You can designate an alternate so that, for example, if I was not able to attend the meeting for, because some emergency came up, the alternate could attend in my place. However, at a normal convention, we would have an alternate who could come and take my place on the floor if I had to leave the room for, you know, make a phone call or whatever.
Have to still appoint an alternate?
Yes.
Some of these definitely could help us, you know, especially some of these special ed, they're nice. I don't, I don't know anything that's going to save, you know, especially the financial ones where they're going to go, but I'm sure they'll be approved by everybody, but I don't...
Yeah, so I mean, I'd recommend that if, you know, you take a look at them again, read them a little more thoroughly, and if there's any, if anybody has any questions, you know, you can email them or whatever. And we can try to, you know, put this on the agenda for another meeting so that we can answer any questions or, you know, examine a resolution more closely if we want to. And then we can go forward from there.
Do we have any questions on the item or any, what you want to talk about specifically? Or, I'm pretty much, Mark just needs to know pretty much if there's, he wants us to vote yes on them or no on them, so if we're all kind of in agreement on that.
I had a question on Resolution 19. You said Weebituck had presented it before and it had not passed. Did I hear that correctly? For every three years? It was the same?
I don't know the specifics, I just remember the district and the topic.
It was something else, it was something else that they wanted the, it's kind of things they wanted like their board members to be doing.
Yeah, it's kind of a similar thing where they're expecting their board members to take a training every year or every, you know, I forget what the period of time was, but they're basically trying to get board members to take more training. And they wanted to be mandated, where, you know, the debate on the floor was that, you know, we're already mandated to take certain training and, you know, if we have, if we mandate training, then there's a cost involved in that and some school districts may not be able to afford that in their budgets or whatever. And it's basically an unfunded mandate then. So, there was a lot of debate against that and that resolution did not pass.
Kids can take any training they want to take. I mean, it's, you know, it's not like, couldn't do it, but...
Right.
Right, to have it mandated when it can cost, you know, those trainings can be, you know, $500 a person.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important, training for people to have it once every three years is a really frequent coming around of that training.
Just ensures that every board member gets it, right? So, it's a three-year term, so it fits in with, you at least getting it while you're...
Right, but what if you've served on, what if you've served multiple terms and you have to keep taking the training?
If it was mandated, I think you would, yeah.
That seems silly to me. I mean, once you've taken the training, you don't need to take it every three years ad nauseam.
And we've always had, you know, an agenda item in one of our board meetings where we discuss, you know, what it, you know, who the mandated reporters are and what the law says and that sort of thing. So, in effect, that's really a training for us to remind us what our responsibilities are rather than taking a formal training that, you know, has a cost involved.
Is this resolution specifically, it seems like it still says school personnel though. I don't, I read it a couple of times, I'm not seeing that it's saying board members.
It's really for the school personnel.
And I do think, by the way, similar to what we do with some other recurring policies, you know, particularly sexual harassment, especially as it relates to reporting and to whom you report, I think it's a, I mean, I'm, whether it's a resolution or something, I think it's, it's good practice. There are many things that you do on an annual basis as a reminder of the importance and the reminder of how to report. And I think it's a very good measure to have in place. And we do have a contract for training for employees that is done, is delivered through online modules, but we have access to all of this, so it would not be an additional. I think it's, it's... I think it's, it's, you know, I'm not saying about the resolution, but I think it is an important thing to remind people, not only recognizing signs, but also who do you go to about that? Because it's one of those things you don't remember, you get a training, but it's a good reminder to just say, if, this is who you report. Because oftentimes, people report to the wrong people and it doesn't get to the right place and the speed that it should. So I think, I'm just pointing that out.
Is this currently something our employees get, a type of, there is, do we do yearly training on this?
It's a part of a required, yeah, it's part of our, it's a part of our GCN required.
Sexual harassment, yes, but not the reporting aspect.
Right, not the reporting. It is part of just teacher certification.
Yeah.
The certification process.
So the non-instructs have never gotten this type of, of training or anything?
The only thing district-wide that I would see as a concern, a concern particularly this year with the pandemic going on, is that district personnel are reminded of the, the need for, for reporting, right now more than ever, because our kiddos are so isolated in many circumstances, especially the ones who are being schooled from home. But I don't see this resolution as, I think it's excessive.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think the question really is, you know, what, should, should people be mandated to take a formal training, or should it be just included in your, you know, back-to-school sort of thing, where there's a few sentences said about, you know, what the mandated reporting issues are, and, you know, talking about the issues, and there's really not much cost to that.
And if you take a look at Proposal Number 27 by Weebituck, which they're not recommending, is a slightly different one, where they're asking for periodic refresher courses. So that's a more prolonged, I think, when I had to take the mandated report, it was three or four hours long, versus just getting, which 19 is, just getting a re, you know, just kind of an update to remind you every three years versus, this is like, take the course over again. So.
Their response to the resolution is pretty clear, the, how they respond to that, it's pretty, it's basically saying that it should be left up to a district to, to communicate.
All right, so make sure that you look over these, you're clear and that we are clear with Mark at the following meeting, you know, if you don't agree with any of these. And also, we do need somebody to agree to be the alternate. What is the date, Mark, of the?
October 31st. I think the meeting is scheduled for 8:00 a.m. It's a virtual meeting, and I think it's scheduled until 10:00 or 10:30, but it may end earlier than that, depends on how efficient it moves along.
Only be needed if Mark that morning tells you he can't. They do officially have to know who the alternate is, but, so if we, somebody could.
I think it may be more efficient, because when you're on the convention floor, a lot of times, it takes people time to walk up to the microphone to make their point, and, you know, there's some debate about, you know, whether there's point of order or whatever, and I think it will run more efficiently if people are not in person, but they're, you know, in a, hopefully, you know, it'll only be a couple of hours probably, if, if you're interested. And they do have a, a training program scheduled for people that may want to be delegates, so that you can learn what the process is and, you know, how motions are brought to the floor and that sort of thing, so. I'm not sure what the exact, what the date is of that, but it's usually a little bit before the actual meeting.
They have to do the training, or if somebody was an alternate, you could tell them?
You don't have to do the training, it's optional. I mean, even when people go to the convention, they have a training there, so people who are going to be delegates can go to it and just learn what the procedures are, because they do have a procedure for, you know, late resolutions and making resolutions from the floor and things like that, and there's a whole formal process, and they want everybody to be aware of that, so there's not confusion during the meeting.
So, everybody look at your calendars, see if you're available to be alternate. Mark is pretty reliable, though.
I anticipate I'll be there, but, you know.
He hasn't missed one, yeah.
It is Halloween.
It's always a good idea to have an alternate.
Yes.
And that's a Saturday, right?
Yes.
All right, so we're gonna move on to good news. Anyone have any good news?
So, as you all know, we had our facilities tour this evening, we've mentioned it a little bit during the meeting, but I just want to reiterate, you know, and I guess, you know, we talked a little bit about this during the, the tour, but, you know, when we proposed this project a few years ago, you know, we really talked about how there was really nothing sexy in, in the project, it was all work that needed to be done, but it was nothing that, you know, you would say, we really need this to make our schools run, right? Sometimes it's, you know, a fancy project like an auditorium or a science lab or something like that, and we really had nothing like that in this project, other than some improvements to our physics lab. But walking through after the, now the project is finished, what a difference it's made for our schools, and everything looks really good. The new windows at Chancellor look, you know, really great, there's no more gaps in the windows, we have, all the walls have been painted, new paint on the lockers, new ceilings and lighting, and it really has made our, so much improvement to our educational space, you know, and I think it's really important to point that out, and I really want to thank our voters for voting in favor of the project, you know, back, that was three or four years ago when we actually had the vote, so I think it was, it's really been a worthwhile project. So much, so much, so many things have changed throughout this project.
I want to thank Sheldon for giving us a tour he does every year, but pointing everything out and taking his time to show it. I mean, his crew does a great job, and everything always looks really good in our building. Your point about the public, I mean, it would be really nice if we could show, you know, everyone doesn't get to go on the tour like we do and see all the little things that, that make a difference, but.
I do know that I, I took some over the summer, I mean, it wasn't the before before, and I know Sheldon has some, he took some with his drone, I know that, so we had, we had discussed that, so I think we would be able to, to, to do that, just as a means of kind of celebrating it, because I, I agree with Mark, it's something that you don't realize the impact it'll have until you see it all together, and the sum of its parts is so, like, has such an impact, so.
Other good news? Say we're on week two, week three with school, week two?
The third group of cohorts come in this week. So on Thursday, we'll have the full middle school, so grade six to eight, and then we'll have nine, 10, and 11. And then CLS has been full capacity since last Wednesday.
In this crazy world, every day we're in school and every day that goes by is good news, so I think that, that's good news. And I, I think, I just want to also thank you for the report. I think it's the first report of its kind that we've had at our board meeting, and sorry no one was here to see that one, but I know they'll be watching it online, but thank you for that, that was great. All right, any old business? Another opportunity for public comment, seeing none, any other? Okay, so we're gonna move on to our action items. Did anybody want to move anything from the consent agenda? Okay. Now, a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following consent items.
Similar?
Second.
All those in favor? Passes. Now, a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Anthony Chenice, CLS teaching assistant for the purpose of retirement, as stated effective the close of business on October 14th, 2020.
Similar?
Second.
Any discussion? Just want to thank him for his service to the school and on his retirement. All those in favor? Motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Dorothy Holder, CLS monitor, effective close of business on September 16th, 2020.
Similar?
Second.
Discussion? Wish Dorothy good luck also. All those in favor? Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the request from Amy Mateo, BMS food service worker for leave of absence under the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, as applicable from September 15th, 2020 through October 2nd, 2020.
Similar?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following resolution, resolve that the Board of Education approve the terms of the release and settlement agreement involving student number 2020-21-01, a copy of which shall be incorporated by reference in the minutes of this meeting, and be it further resolved that the superintendent of schools be and hereby is authorized to execute such release and settlement agreement on behalf of the district.
Similar?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve as a first reading and consideration board policy. Do we have the number? Is it still to be?
I don't know how to get a number.
Okay, we'll, we'll have it by the next meeting. The board number, the policy number is to be, not known yet. COVID-19 workplace and student learning environment accommodations.
Similar?
Second.
Any discussion? So this will come back for a final reading, so you know, see if you have any, anything you want to change or any discussion about that before it becomes a final at the next one. All those in favor? Okay. Passes. We have no executive session, right?
Um, do we have anything executive?
Not really.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Similar?
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Any discussion?